All right, Eric, you want to jump into your other stuff?
Yep.
I do. I asked James and Shannon to be on here in case you had any questions about transit transit and or CDOT relative. Shannon has been in some of those conversations, I believe, with CDOT.
Hey Dennis, can you mute your, Dennis?
I'm on here, Eric, go ahead.
I know, can you mute it? I think we're getting a lot of feedback from you.
I'll try right now.
Thank you, okay.
I have a question about feedback or about CDOT. The, you know, as I remember the discussions, Eric, when you and I were in that committee, you know, the design committee for our parking structure, it seemed to me that I heard from, from, her name's escaping me, but that was working with CDOT, that she said if there's any further development in the area that will necessitate a roundabout on French Street. So I, you know, I didn't want to question Mike in the public meeting, but, but, but I guess I don't necessarily agree with his assessment that this development will not require the French Street Roundabout. I believe it will from, from the meeting I was in.
Trust me, you're not going to have a thousand cars parked in Gold Rush. Can you imagine a thousand cars trying to make a left-hand turn out of Gold Rush on the highway?
Never get out.
No.
Right.
Yeah, there's no doubt in my mind that CDOT would require that roundabout.
No matter what.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's start with the first piece. Let's start with the transit piece. Does anybody have any questions for staff before we comment on where we are on the transit piece?
Yeah, I have a question. I mean, is it, is the current location of the transit livable? It is something that we can, we can deal with and make work? Or is this kind of a crisis decision?
Jeffrey, Mike, I guess my reply to that would be it's, it's certainly not a crisis situation, but there's a real opportunity. I think we've identified that the current location and configuration of the station is no longer that efficient for us. We've grown, you know, magnitude since that was initially, you know, constructed. And so this, this is an opportunity for us to really improve on.
Is there any quick fix or mitigation that we can take a stoplight or, or something that would be a cheaper fix to get this thing done without building a whole new building?
I'm sure there's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Here's the only improvement we'll have, no matter what, if we did nothing at all, we would have a slight improvement because we would probably not send our, our buses would probably not have to make a left on the Park Avenue, but they would take a right and go into the roundabout and then come back out. So that, that will add time, obviously, especially during peak traffic. That will add time to the route, but that will be, that will be one improvement to our current system. But the majority of it is you're putting a lot of buses in a small area and kind of going every which way and people passing into that horseshoe, a lot of walking across buses and different things. It's just not, it's not very, it's kind of organized chaos out there.
And could we not?
Go ahead, Kelly. No, go ahead.
I just wondered, can we not expand the transit anymore? Like, are we at capacity for our transit center? Like, sure, it works okay, but we definitely couldn't add a couple more buses?
I would say we're real close to that, Kelly. The, probably the biggest thing, and Rick alluded to it just now, is that the probably the thing that presents the most problem is just the conflict that we have. The way that it's configured right now, everyone has to kind of walk through each other and all the buses, it's very confusing for the guests. And now we're pushing, you know, non-COVID, we're pushing 1.3 million people kind of almost through that node in a lot of ways. And it's very, it presents a lot of conflicts, a lot of confusion. You know, with the configuration that was presented, you know, we did look at that from a staff level. That does present a lot of opportunity and I think we can better address some of that pedestrian movement.
I think there's a, there's something else that we, we never really talked about. Number one, we can always tear down that transit center and build, you know, what we, we have been talking about and something a little easier to use. Number two, we're going to start housing 400 cars on South Gondola, 400 additional cars. That's 400 cars that will not be parking out at the airport. That's 400 cars worth of people per day that will not be getting on a bus to come into the Gondola. What does that do? You know, what is that overall effect? Does that lessen the need by one or two buses at any given time? And if it does, does that sort of, to Jeffrey's point, mitigate some of this problem as it stands with what we're doing currently?
But also, we're adding Alta Verde out there.
Yeah, that's only 80, that's only 80 people, though. I mean, call it 160 even. It's just not that many compared to, you know, that daily influx of skier traffic. I mean, if, if you look at the early times of the season when it's mostly locals here and, and workers, that, that thing functions fine. As soon as you start getting a lot of tourists in there that don't know what they're doing, that's when things start to fall apart, I think. You know, riding the bus as much as I do, you know, you know, when things start to fall apart out there is, I mean, it's, it's coming. Maybe this year, we'll see, but, you know, it's really those 60 days that are just terrible in town, so.
And how much would a, how much would a transit center cost? What are we talking about? Building a transit center?
Four to five million, probably.
There's potentially federal dollars that we could get, right, James?
Well, that's, that's a little bit tricky now, Eric. If, for those that were around when this was constructed, we already received federal funding for this building. So to, to, to take it down or destroy it and build another one, we might have to, might not be as successful as we were the first time around.
Could we move it?
Um, I don't know that it's, we could move it, but I don't know that it's really worth moving. And when I say that is, is if we had a second chance to do this, we would design it differently than it is currently. So it would function a lot differently and honestly better than it does now. So there, there's opportunity to work with the footprint that we have there, but we would have to put the dollars up likely for that. The one thing if we, there are grant opportunities, kind of PPP type grant opportunities, depending on how council, you know, goes on this, that private partner funds that we could potentially access for grant funding for this, but that's, that's not a certainty either at this point, but just something that's possible.
With the employment issues that we've had of trying to get bus drivers the last couple of years, do you think it's even reasonable to think that we're going to continue expanding our transit like annually?
Um, I think we'll be successful. I think one of the big hour glasses that we have right now is, is housing. And then also, we're, we're competing, you know, everyone's kind of up the ante in terms of recruiting drivers. And this, we're seeing this even in the street side of things for operators. There's a lot of bonuses that they're doing with things like, you know, kind of added benefits to, for those recruitments. So I think, you know, we have opportunities that go beyond. I don't know that that's going to be restrictive of how we expand transit in the future.
Hey, James, have you had a chance to look at the new alignment that they're presenting? Are, are you really comfortable with that? Or would you like a little more time to be certain that, 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 that alignment is the end? I mean, if we're going to spend four or five million ducks, we need this to be perfect for us, not for the development. All right, all right. Would you like a little more time to look at that and, and work with some consultants to ensure that we're making our money well?
Yeah, I definitely think, yeah, time is, to review it a little bit more would be beneficial. I think we've initially looked at it. There's a lot of details that still need to be landed and/or, you know, kind of put down on paper. This is, the way that we're looking at it is kind of conceptual. And from a conceptual standpoint, it does, it could work and there are a lot of benefits. But there, there's definitely some things that we need to flush out as part of any agreement and design.
Dick, I would almost suggest that a, as part of this, if we decide that we want to go ahead with a, with a land lease with the developer, that we just go for a land lease. We do not lock it into any design that they have currently done. We ask for that parcel of land. And don't forget, in return for that, they get the land that the transit center is under eventually because there are townhomes that will go there. That have some serious value in their location to the rest of the community. So, you know, I, so.
That's where I was going, Eric. I, I agree with you. That's where I was going, so.
Yeah, all you want to do is get a parcel of land. You don't want, you're not taking their design.
Yeah, but if we, if we get a parcel of land, then we're kind of forced into a timeframe that, that might not work for us if, you know, depending what happens with COVID, what happens with our, our economy. And my thought is, what the heck, what else could we do with $5 million? And if we can, if that roundabout makes the current transit location a little bit more usable, I just think, I think we have to be pretty fiscally conservative and rather than lock us into climbing and, you know, getting into bed with these guys.
Fair enough. Other questions?
Maybe we say we'll split the price of the new transit with them or something. Because it, it benefits them as much or more than it does us.
But if I heard correctly, we don't, all we have to do is tell them that we're interested now. But down the road, we have the right to change our minds. We're just looking for a placeholder.
No, no, no. No, he's going to submit, he's going to submit his plan based on the building. He, he said that his building design will change. He needs to, that is what he needs to know more than anything.
Thank you.
Um, the new orientation, the potential, if we change our land lease, that, James, from your perspective, that would be beneficial from a traffic flow or an improvement. What about for pedestrian flow? If we have people getting off of the buses, they're either going to the Gondola, but a lot of people, they're going to work in town. What about from a pedestrian flow? People walking through the new proposed development to get into town?
Um, honestly, that was the one thing that we as staff didn't like as much is that it moved, you know, the buses further away from town. And so you did have to walk further to get to town or even get to the Gondola. The, the nice thing about where it is now is, is that it is close to the Gondola and close to town. So a couple of concepts that we looked at earlier, we were centered more on the location that's currently. This one does, again, move it away from that. And there was another iteration that he had presented earlier too, that even took it, took the buses further away from where they're shown on his concept now. So that, to answer the question, ideally, we would like to stay in the location that we're at, but it would, it's going to take some reconfiguration to kind of make it function better than it does right now. Hopefully that answers your question.
Well, so are you saying that the best option for our community is that we just ask them to continue our land lease in the same location as it is now? And whenever we have the money for it, we can reconfigure things?
I think ideally that would be, I mean, one of the, one of the nice things now is we have the parking garage right there, the Gondola right there. We're going to have the roundabout so we, at Watson. So we can be independent of anything that, that BGV is presenting right now. I think really the next steps would be if we want to make improvements on what we have now, it would be doing away with the current building and changing the way that some of the buses access and how we queue for those buses. So I think there's definitely opportunity and from just an overall efficiency. I like, and staff has also had this discussion, having the proximity to Main Street and some of the other Gondola everything is better just in overall efficiency. And to Eric's point, I think we don't know what the future is going to hold with the new parking structure, but there might be a way to reduce the buses that do hub and spoke out of that area.
And is.
Well, and I think, I, I mean, I, I think that this is, I don't know. I, I'm still all about public transportation and buses. I think that this is a really important goal of our community. But I do, I know at one point we were talking about satellite anchors, you know, on, on either side of Main Street, which I also thought was, was a clever idea because then you don't have the buses necessarily running through the middle of town. So, I mean, I guess if this isn't going to lock us in to that, I, but, but I still, I just want to say, I, I really think, I, I think we should continue to encourage people and our guests to use transit and, and that the buses should be a priority. But if you're saying that leaving it as is is better for the pedestrians and it ultimately does help our congestion, then that's, that's important. So. But, but you did say that this was a better, I'm a little confused as far, sorry, James, I'm a little confused as to where you're lying as far as if you, if you had your druthers, if you were to design this, would you stay with what is? Or would you go with this, would you move the transit center and go with what, kind of what they have planned? Only talking about land lease, right, Erin? I mean, would you stay in the current location or do you want that other piece of land? Yeah. Because we can make it look like whatever. Yeah, like for buses, for congestion. Yeah, exactly. And with, with the pedestrian, I get that it's a little bit further. But yeah, anyway, I'm asking the question. James, what are your thoughts?
Well, I'm going to, I'm also going to ask Shannon to weigh in on this one as, as well, Shannon. But I think to answer the question, and I, and I realized that initially I said that the proposed design could work and it could, it could provide some great opportunities, certainly. From just looking at it initially, I think that design would be something that, that would probably be easier for our buses to, to operate. The thing that's a, a big con for that one, in my estimation and talking to staff, is it does put the guests further away from town and the Gondola, and you have to walk through potentially this development. I think the land, and Shannon, I'm going to ask you if you believe there's enough land, if we were to do away with Rock Station, if we have the opportunity to enhance or change kind of the infrastructure and the design of the current location and still make it operate and efficient.
I think, James, we did study the current ground lease layout with options initially with Walker. Do you remember we went a very short, a shortened thing? And we didn't really find a better layout than the horseshoe. The piece that I worry about if we don't change up the ground lease is the transit building. Right now, we are on the hook for owning and maintaining all those restrooms. If we want to change the transit building in size and location, who is going to own those restrooms moving forward? I think that is a, I mean, it seems like that the restrooms need to be a big discussion point with BGV, but we're kind of stuck with a big transit center in that location if we're going to continue to do the restrooms. I don't think the rectangle that they're showing on the proposed alteration accommodates restroom facilities, honestly. So if we do stick with the current one, we're not going to be able to do much better with that transit building and move it around if we also have to do those restrooms. And I think changing the, is important. I, I think from a whole site flow from South Gondola lot, because right now that transit building blocks the view corridor. So ideally, it would be great to wipe out that transit building and replace it with something much smaller. But then we lose all the skier services in there.
Shannon, are we up for those?
That's a question.
Is that part of the lease that we have the bathrooms?
Nope.
Yes.
It is.
But it's not, you know, maybe to, to, just to clarify a little bit, and Shannon, you made, you raised a good point. But there's not that much, there's not that many restroom amenities or there. I think there's only two and two, if I'm not mistaken, or two and three stalls in there. So the, the restrooms are, are significantly undersized for how many people we put through there right now. And the grand room is really something that, again, to have an opportunity to do this again, we wouldn't have a big grand room like that. That's a waste of, honestly, a waste of space and just invites a lot of kind of unwanted activities. So we could, we could, we could significantly reduce that and still probably have the same restroom.
And I thought the restrooms we put in the new parking structure would satisfy that need.
You know, that's only for the people that are in that parking lot is the problem, Dick. I mean, when you think about it, the restroom should be the skier's responsibility because it's there. I mean, and here's the other piece. Once Mike builds his stuff, there should be restrooms in the parking garage that he is building over in Gold Rush. Because that's where those, that's where those 550 parking spaces from North Gondola are going to get relocated over to the Gold Rush site. That's got to be part of the discussion is there needs to be bathrooms there. So when you think about it, who will the bathrooms then be for? Really only the transit riders at that point. Potentially the people that are on that front part of the South Gondola parking. But it's not going to have the same, you know, in four or five years, it won't have the same requirement for bathrooms that we have currently. So I think James is right. We could build the same stuff that's in there currently on the backside of that smaller building, not give up any of that land there. Talk to the skier about using that for their queuing and in return get some help with the bathroom. So I think there's other negotiations that can go on with the skier and not with the landowner when it comes to it.
If DUDAS brought restrooms in his parking structure, right?
But, you know, we have a say on what, you know, I mean, the planning commission will be able to say, hey, you need to put bathrooms in this thing. I don't, I don't, is there a code basis for bathrooms in a parking structure, Mark?
It's not required at all. They all thought we were crazy putting them on South Gondola. We had to really convince the design team it was the right thing to do.
How do you have a, how do you have a thousand cars show up from Denver and nobody's going to the bathroom?
No, I promise you, there's no code requirement.
Yeah, but you know what?
Structure code is problematic too. I asked how much density will go for that parking structure? And Truckee told me like one and a half SFEs, which to me is frustrating. That's a huge development for that.
Better change it quick.
The way he's bringing people over from the parking structure, he's going to run them through a sales gauntlet for timeshare. Unless we're able to change it, he will have restrooms as part of that. You don't need to worry about him. I, I, I'm not that worried about restrooms personally.
Yeah, you're right, Dick. I think they're going to have to do that. Okay.
So, hey, Eric, I just need to, I need to clarify. I misspoke earlier because I was thinking, I said, under our current configuration, buses won't have to make a left. They don't have to anyways because we're building a roundabout at Watson's. I was, I had misspoke when I said, I'm a little disappointed that one of the advantages to moving, one of the advantages to putting it more linear along Park Avenue would be not sending the buses as far into Watson to enter, but CDOT's still going to require that. So that's not as big a gain for us as we thought it would have been before. You know, so.
Okay, any other questions on this?
I'm still confused. I felt like James said we can reconfigure the existing land lease and get something great. We don't need the linear one. And Shannon said, no, we looked at that and there isn't anything great we could do over there. Am I wrong? I don't know where you guys stand. I'm super.
I think there, there is probably, we looked at that, there's very limited configuration we could do. Could we do some stuff? Yes. Are we going to have a huge impact? No. Just by building. Yeah.
We're limited to the horseshoe, basically, in that area. We can reconfigure, Kelly, the transit station, pedestrian flow from South Gondola and the queuing, the problematic queuing from the Gondola under the current land lease. But the bus orientation will be very similar to how it is now. Unless we change the number of buses, we need to fit in that area. Does that help clarify?
So you want the long, you want what he, you want the piece of land he's got proposed?
Personally, it, it makes no difference to me. I want to move the transit building.
And, and that's where I'm at.
Move the transit building, that would help things.
I, and I would agree with that. I would agree with that. I think we have some opportunity with our current ground lease. I don't know that there's a, I don't know that there is a great need to move quickly with the deal that we have on the table. I guess I was initially answering, what could we make, would that work? Absolutely, we could make it work. But I don't know that the advantages of that outweigh some of the, some of the disadvantages of that, so.
There you go.
Okay, great. That helped a lot.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Speaking of the, yes, speaking of the advantages, could we put a number or a weight to how the congestion would change by moving the transit center to this lease option? It, could that reduce, you know, bus congestion by a certain percentage or anything like that? Like, I think that's where I struggle. I'm not seeing what any, what the weight is of it, of the improvement or not.
Well, I guess the, the, you know, to try to answer that question, I don't know if I can put a number to, you know, to exactly, but. And just looking at what we have right now, based on the number of buses that pulse in and out of the station, the design that Mike has would function, the efficiency would be better and some of the pedestrian flow could be better. Some of those conflicts could be reduced. Um, but again, the, the con of that would be that the people have to travel further. They're out on Park Avenue essentially, and they'd have to walk back to the Gondola or to Main Street. So if you're, again, kind of going to transit oriented development, we want to get the employees and the guests into town or to the Gondola as quickly as possible, it does make that, that travel, you know, distance a little bit greater. I think we have probably, and this is something that we've looked at a number of times and based on, the one thing that we didn't know, this, the South Gondola parking structure, we didn't know how this is going to have impact on transit. I think we're all believing now that it's going to have a great influence in the fact that we might not have to have as many buses. So I think we have opportunity on our side within the town and our current ground lease to maybe reduce some of the buses and some of that conflict and some of that pulse that we have at the station right now. Again, I, I think overall, the, the opportunities that we have, if we can change some of the the structure and the infrastructure of our current ground lease, I think we have some opportunity there. And I don't know that we really need to, you know, go for the deal that, that Mike has at this point. But that's just, you know, that's your decision, obviously, but that's kind of.
I just going to say, you're not going to hear anything overwhelming from staff that says we need this piece of land right now, right? In a perfect world, if it was open, we could set back, we could really study it. We could probably bring some consultants in, which we have done to a certain extent. Even when we had consultants, we knew there was a trade-off. And some of what the feedback we got was we're putting people too far away from Main Street when they get off the bus. And, but, so now, you know, I'd almost prefer to, in a perfect world, I would like to see how this transit center functions once the Gondola, South Gondola structure is built. Because we're not going to have people sheep herding across Watson that whole length like we did before, which interferes. And so it may be more efficient in that regard too. Plus with the roundabout that's going to be built, will make it work better. So we don't know. And so push comes to shove, we got to make a decision right now. You're not going to probably, you know, I think you have to gauge your comfort level in wanting to negotiate something. And there's not overwhelming support from us to say, push forward with that, probably, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, let's go to comments. Dick? You first.
I'm muted.
Sorry. Get your t-shirt out, Eric. I, I, I'm not in favor of the, of the land lease changing. I, I, you know, if we're going to have to spend four or five million bucks to, to. I, I, you know, if we're gonna have to spend four or five million bucks to, to, to build a new transit center and, and a new transit, you know, building, I, I think it's better spent in our current location, closer to Main Street, closer to the gondola. This is year round transit for us and, and I think those are, oh, you know, those outweigh the benefits of the other one.
Okay, Carol, you're next.
Um, I am not in favor of moving our ground lease. Biggest issue for me is the pedestrian traffic closer to Main Street. I think our current location is better for the people taking the bus to go to work, to get to Main Street without having to walk through this new development with potential townhomes right there. So no on that. My other point is that this kind of sets our priority for capital improvement projects. And maybe we don't want to prioritize reconfigurating, spending four million, four or five million on the transfer station, so.
Thank you, Carol. Dennis?
Agreed with Carol, not in favor of moving our ground lease at this time. I think we have other options and I think the four or five million that it would take can be spent better elsewhere. I love the idea of keeping people closer to the core of town.
Thanks, Dennis. Jeffrey?
Yeah, I agree with everything that's, that's been said. I, I think we need to, for all the reasons stated, but also we, we've got to, you know, keep our dollars and cents close right now until we see what's going on with our, our country.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Uh, Kelly?
Yeah, I agree with everything said. And in addition, I really don't want their tall townhomes in between our transit center and Main Street. Like, I think it's way better if those are over by park. And then also, he said that if we didn't realign the transit center, that he could spread his development out and it wouldn't be as tall. And I think that's great too. So as long as there's no major benefit for transit, I think this is better.
Thanks, Kelly. Erin?
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good with keeping it as is. I also think, yeah, we don't know, we don't know what the future would hold. I just, you know, I, I still think that we need to make buses and public transportation a priority. And I, I do think that we need a new transit station at some point. And I, I do think that should be a priority, but this allows us more flexibility with that.
Thanks, Erin. I totally agree with everything that everybody has said. So that's number one. Number two is housing. How do we feel about incremental housing on that property? And questions first, if there are any.
Does, are, are we alone?
Are we what?
Alone.
Oh, yeah, not the two of us, but there's a bunch of.
Just the people I see. Yeah, so there's no one else on here. My question is. Okay, yeah. Can any, my question is by agreeing to any sort of a housing, are we committed any sort of endorsement of, of this project or any project that comes down the line? And can that be used as a leverage down the line if they want to do something that we might not, or a future council? Oh, no, that we might not think is best for the community?
Jeffrey, let me, let me, let me. Other questions? Erin?
I have a question about dormitory style housing, since he mentioned it a couple of times. And how that qual, first of all, does it qualify for, like, do we have any stipulations about what type of housing qualifies for housing obligations and development? And then also, he made a good point about, you know, when Dick, when Dick mentioned the AMI and he's not sure how that translates, I'm not sure how that translates. I mean, we're usually looking at studios, one, at least studios where there's at least a kitchen and a bathroom within a unit. But I, I, and a comment would be, I have some strong concerns about dormitory housing. But, okay, the questions were about, you know.
The code requires, the code requires, I believe, 350 square foot per person that you're mitigating. So if he has to mitigate 10 people, then he's required to build 3, 3,500 square feet of housing. And I, it's pretty open as to what that looks like. It could be one large 3,500 square foot house that he could de-restrict, that would, that would meet that requirement, I believe. So, you know, the style and the layout is, is, as long as it meets that square footage is, is okay within the code. And we would find, you'll, you'll find a formula, right? With the, with the AMI and a dormitory, it's probably going to be some hybrid that we'd have to come up with.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, Kelly, do you want to go first?
Sure. Um, I don't think that this is the right place for housing. I think 100% for workforce housing. 100% AMI is just basically adding more expensive housing. I don't see that as being workforce housing. It's certainly not going to be for restaurants or ski employees. So I just, unless we were really willing to put in some money and get it down to that 60% AMI. And I just, if we're willing to do that, I think we should, I think we should get with vaguely because I think that's a lot better location for it. I know that he's saying, if you're in the heart of town, you're not going to have to drive your car. And he'll be happy to charge our poor community members to take their car out of the garage. But I just, you know, I mean, you have to take your car to the grocery store. Everybody goes to Denver. I just don't, and, and you drive to your friend's house up, you know, wherever. So I just don't see this as being a carless location, even though we would like it to be. And I also think it's ridiculous to think that it would be a good place for, you know, young families or something when they've got park in their front yard and trying to get across park. It, for a lot of reasons, it's just, it's not the right place in my opinion.
Thanks, Kelly. Uh, Erin?
I was hoping to hear other people's comments first. But I, I guess, well, it's okay. I, I can go. I'm flexible. I, I think I would, I would look for a little bit more housing if, if we were to do this. But I would want stipulations that it does, you know, I, I know that, so if there's the average of 100 that we go quite a bit below and quite a bit above. But I don't want the dormitory style housing. I, there's just some risks there that I worry about. And I mean, micro units would be great, but I guess I'm, I'm a bit more flexible than, than what Kelly's saying. I definitely agree that this would not be, you know, for small families. So this would be, you know, probably that, that lower AMI. And, yeah, so, so I would, I would be willing to have the conversation and have a little bit more there. But I, I'm not going to follow my sword on it for it.
Thank you. Uh, Dick?
I'm a no. I, I thought Kelly said it quite well. The only thing I would add is, you know, the 143 SFEs on this site is a lot, you know? I mean, when you think that the, the peak seven, you know, grand vacation on peak seven is 130 SFEs. Well, I drove up there this morning after I went to the gym and that's a big damn building. You know, that's a big complex up there and this is even more than that. And I, I, I just think we've got too much programming on this site already. I mean, they have rights to do more programming than this site can handle already. So as much as we need employee housing, I just, this isn't a place.
Thanks, Dick. Uh, Jeffrey?
Yeah, um, again, I agree with all that's been said. Echo Dick and Kelly's sentiments. I, I think this is something, you know, he can do what he can do, but I don't, I don't think we need to make it larger in any way, shape or form. And again, I just think we need to err on the side of caution when it comes to what our commitments are in the future.
Thanks, Jeffrey. Um, Carol?
I agree with what's been said. Also, just, I don't find the pedestrian bridge solution where they have to cross into the garage, walk through the garage, then cross over. That doesn't make sense. I know there's some potential other configurations that could be made in general with that location. If it was fully a town project, we could take full ownership on, over it. I could see some potential, but as it's presented, I'm a no.
And, and Dennis?
Yeah, as, as presented from Mike today, I don't, I don't feel like this is the right place for workforce housing for all the reasons mentioned.
Thanks, Dennis. Uh, okay, any other final comments?
What do you think, Eric?
Whoa.
Yeah.
Are you all, are you fully supported?
Fully supported. No, I agree. I have not been a fan of housing on this property since the beginning, when we started talking about this. I think getting people across the street is very difficult. I think we have a, we have a ski underpass from Mountain Thunder that people will cut through the trees to cross the street rather than go under, underneath the street. And they will do the same thing here. And Mike and I had a discussion with Rick at the Crown and we butted heads on this. He believes it's an engineering solution and I believe that you cannot change people's minds. I just don't think people will do what they want to do and that is a huge part of this for me. I think some of the comments that all of you have made are super valid also. You know, Kelly's comments about, do we really need more 100% AMI? We're gonna have 100% AMI that is built like it is for 40% AMI. And I don't think that's what we want either. And then to say, well, if you guys give me the density, then we can buy that down. I, I, I would rather the developer go through the process at this point with what he's going to do. And, you know, sort of to Dick's point, he has a right to build 143 SFEs on that property if it fits. If it fits according to the development code, if he can park it, if it doesn't exceed anything within our town code for positives and negatives. You know, there is a lot to go on this. I like the fact that for the most part, we are not getting involved in any way with this development. And let's let it play out the way it's supposed to play out at this point. So, Tim, do you have anything to add? Does that sound legit?
Yeah, and it's, and we don't need to say, like, the rest of us don't need to say anything.
Motion to come out of executive session.
Don't move.
Don't move.
There's a second, there's a motion and a second, we are out of exec session. I'll see you back at the regular meeting momentarily.